Bring us back to order with our final committee for the afternoon. That's the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole has three items before us today, three agenda items. The first item is a discussion of the Pickett Bridge. At our previous meeting, the City Council, well, first of all, the City Council has received requests from the constituents, members of our community, to remove the current signage or and/or rename it Pickett Bridge. On August 14th, this council voted to refer to committee, that is referred to this committee of the Whole, a discussion regarding tasking the Historic Preservation Commission, which is a volunteer body the city has, to, one, engage the community with a better understanding, to better understand their concerns about the name, two, to research the history of the bridge and the naming of the bridge, and, three, to present their findings and recommendations to the mayor and City Council after a public process. This agenda item was initiated by Councilmember April Barker. April?
Well, you read my words perfectly. So, that's pretty, that's pretty much exactly what I wanted to see. I think it's an opportunity for us to learn the history from all perspectives, and we know there's a lot of history out there. And then, an opportunity, too, for trying to really utilize our commissions in our different groups whenever we do have constituent concerns. Sometimes we can't, we can't hold all those in this space, that we can task some of our commissions and other groups to delve into that and then come back and give us a report, let us know what they think, and give us their recommendations. So, I'm, I guess with that, I move that we accept this proposal.
Okay, so, as I understand the motion, the motion is to basically adopt those three numbered points as sort of the charter that we ask the administration, the Historic Preservation Commission, to follow.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion of that? Pinky?
I just wanted to say that there's a lot of miscommunication going on about our involvement in this, and I want to be very clear that we, we support this going to the Historical Committee, that this is not the council's decision alone, and I, we cannot be reactive, and we did not authorize the removal of the sign. This was vandalism. This was not the City Council's purpose or objective. Our objective was to do this properly and not be reactive, and I just wanted to state that for myself, that that, there's been a lot of misinformation, and I completely and totally support this going to the Historical Committee.
My understanding is that it was a concern of vandalism. It wasn't actually removed by vandalism, it was removed out of that concern.
In the van.
That's my understanding, I don't know.
The mayor.
Yeah, there's a lot of facts that need to be.
There are a lot of them.
Yeah.
Brent Heinrichs, Mayor's Office. I, I know the, the mayor did, did act out of a concern for vandalism, as you say, Michael, I know she had some comments she wanted to make this afternoon, she had to step out for a second, but, yeah, it was, I believe, out of an abundance of caution to prevent some vandalism that, that could occur, and I believe, actually, in that time, I believe a rock has been thrown through the window of the House at one point. So, appreciate the direction that council took today, the mayor's supportive of that, and look forward to taking that to the commission and come back with their, their thoughts and recommendations.
So, following up on Pinky's thread, the bridge actually has not been renamed yet. People think that we have renamed it, what we've done is we've gone to a public process. You know, I have my personal opinion on whether it should be renamed or not, and after whom, but, you know, there's a public process that's gonna occur, as you say, it's not our decision alone. Terry, see your hand up also?
Yeah, no, I, I think this idea of sending it to the Historical Society for a full debate in community about this is, is a good thing. We shouldn't be making decisions based on knee-jerk reactions, because a couple people want this, or a couple people want that. These are complicated issues, and, you know, and this one is more complicated than, than a lot of what people are reacting to. So, I think we need, we need thorough conversation and discussion, not just reaction. And so, I, this I can agree with, because, and I hope people weigh in on that, because...
Well, again, to make sure we don't have misunderstanding, Terry, you said Historical Society, actually, the Watcom Historical Society is not the same as the Historic Preservation Commission.
Historical Preservation, okay.
No, I just, I, I just don't want there to be more confusion out there, because there is a Historical Society, and they're quite a resource.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion before us to give direction to the administration, in particular, to use the Historic Preservation Commission to accomplish the three numerical points. Kelly, you're out of the room, you wanna say something?
Yes, I'm so sorry, I was down. And I support the motion that you're making. First of all, I, I'm...
Oh, all right. I'm the one that's usually harping on, don't respond to just one person or one group of people, you know, we had very good direction, you gave me very good direction when we started, and I apologize for not just continuing on down the road with what you, what you had asked me to do. Secondly, just to clear the record up, I left a message for Diana, and I also talked to Edredine Hovey before anything was done. In fact, Edredine was the one who alerted me that those street signs were, were looking at the Pickett House, and we had heard rumors that there might be some kind of an activity, and, so, I know, Terry, I, I'm agreeing with you. So, so I, for an abundance of caution, I thought, let's not, you know, send people to private property to do anything. Okay, having said that, I, first of all, there's nothing, nothing about the Pickett House that I wanna do anything to, that's a piece of private property, that's there, in fact, I know people who help preserve that house, and that's not what I think I was talking about as the mayor. The bridge, that's completely up to the council to decide what they wanna, what they wanna do with that, and I'm, you know, very open to whatever you decide. So, I just wanted to let you know that there was no malice involved in what happened, and if I had it to do over again, I would've just followed your direction to me, which normally I do, sometimes I don't, but I let you know. And so, I'm supportive of the, of the action you're taking now, and I have a lot of respect for the daughters of the pioneers who do a lot to preserve what goes on in our community, and I appreciate their work. So, with that, I will now be quiet.
Jean?
Are the signs back up to the directions to the museum?
I was waiting, I had, I had thought I would direct them to be put back up before I left on vacation. I was advised that it might be confusing since so many different things had been happening. So, I would be happy to do that, but I decided to wait until after this meeting. I'm happy to put the, ask Public Works to put the signs back up to give direction to the Pickett House, since that's private property and not, and it's on public property, but it's giving direction to something that is not public, unless the council tells me not to.
I don't see any problem with having the, the signs put back up for directions to the museum myself.
Yeah, no, I don't either.
Okay, we have a motion before us. I guess I wanna say that this, it's unfortunately, it's been a little more controversial than it needs to be. I think this actually could be a very positive moment to learn a lot, not just about the, you know, our historical past and the settler tradition, but I think a more larger teachable moment on how we deal with our, our own historical past. So, I'm hoping this can be a very positive public process over the next few weeks or months, or whatever it takes, to come forward with a solution. So, I'm seeing that there's an upside to this. Any further discussion on the motion? Although in favor of the motion to direct the administration to begin a process with regard to Pickett Bridge, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, Kelly, thank you so much. The next item is a review of options to prohibit feeding of wild animals in Bellingham. This actually was initiated by, I think, Professor Jean and myself, I can't remember. Many wild animals have adapted to the urban environments and are experiencing steady increases in population. Unfortunately, this results in animal deaths in traffic, destruction of gardens, increasing human-animal conflict, and also, more important, or very importantly, research indicates that the intentional feeding of wildlife worsens these problems and also hastens the spread of disease in animal populations. The Bellingham City Council has received a number of complaints regarding the negative side effects of the intentional feeding of these wild deer. Staff will present research on the impacts of feeding wild animals, discuss sample ordinances intending to prohibit feeding of deer or other wild animals. We don't actually have an ordinance before us to vote on today, this is merely a discussion of whether or not we wanna proceed in, in any way along this direction. Our policy analyst, Mark Gardner, is here to give a presentation. Mark?
Good afternoon, Council. I conducted some research after being directed to do so by the council, and I just wanted to briefly go over some of the facts that, that I undercovered in, in that research, and then we can discuss the ordinances that are also in the packet, and, and if you are so inclined, you can provide direction as to whether or not there's any follow-up on this item. The research indicated that many species of wildlife are highly adaptable to urban environments, and their populations are increasing in urban and suburban areas in North America and Europe, and I was actually kind of interested to find out myself the answer to the question of why are there so many deer in Bellingham, and it turns out this is pretty much a continent-wide phenomenon, and they've adapted quite well, and the amount of food is actually higher in urban environments than it is in a mature forest. And so, over time, because abundance of food leads to higher reproductive rates, I was just comparing my own background, when I went to Western many years ago, I will not tell you how many, that I don't remember seeing any deer to speak of, I mean, here and there, and now they're everywhere. So, anyway, it's, it is basically a highly successful adaptation of that species. Other animals as well, such as raccoons, can thrive in urban environments where they can become nuisances and spread diseases. And, in a general sense, feeding animals worsens problems created by the already unnaturally high concentration in urban areas, and it leads to further concentration, can hasten the spread of disease, and increase human-animal conflicts. Animals can become habituated to humans when regularly fed, and may become more dangerous and territorial if they become too comfortable around close proximity to humans, expect to be fed, expect to kind of, they more or less take over a small part of territory instead of moving around, and, and, and so, feeding exacerbates that. Wildlife experts indicate that there's no benefit to animals from receiving an unnatural diet. In some cases, it can actually lead to health problems and even death, especially in deer. The bottom line is there are no good reasons to feed wild mammals within urban environments. In response to this, a number of cities have enacted ordinances to prohibit feeding of deer or other animal, other mammals. Such ordinances may be coupled with an education component, and may be backed by fines or misdemeanor charges. The ordinances in your packet prohibit feeding of deer, and a few also prohibit feeding of other mammals. One might expect that people wouldn't intentionally feed cougars, but some cities are concerned about that, so those are in some ordinances. So, it depends on the predilection of the jurisdiction, but deer is a common prohibition and just large hoofed animals, but there obviously are some other mammals that cause problems as well. And landscape plants and food explicitly intended for domestic animals or livestock are usually excluded from prohibition, so if there's an incidental feeding, there's no enforcement action. And also, the general, let's see, I think I've already covered that, so, and I wanted to note in, in, in closing that enacting an ordinance won't greatly reduce the population of wild animals, but it could help prevent some of the problems that result from very high concentrations of animals in small areas. And so, basically, it makes a problem that's growing worse and, and exacerbates the issue. So, it, so there are five ordinances from a range of cities in, in your packet, and there's also a two-page memo or review by the Humane Society, and it was done by their, their wildlife experts to indicate the issues that, that, that come into play with wildlife feeding. And so, with, with that, I will close this quick overview, and if you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Councilmembers?
I, I believe it's something we should do, but, you know, looking at all the ordinances, how do you build one of our own? Can you take a little out of each of them and bring one back to us? I mean, it's pretty hard just to say, well, let's do this one, let's do that, well, let's do this.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a sense of what other cities have done, what they, what approach they've taken, but I've already essentially pulled out four or five elements from, from the best of the language, and I've met with our legal department to indicate the, the cleanest, shortest possible ordinance, and so, so, yes, I would certainly give you a, hopefully, the best of the ordinances that are out there.
Yeah, so, Mark and Peter have looked at these, and I think that would be the goal, if we go this direction, the shortest and cleanest. Okay, I'm just gonna go from the end to the middle, I didn't see who had there. So, Terry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think we should move forward with an ordinance regarding not, not feeding, particularly deer and raccoons, because both of them have provided problems with areas. I think, though, we need to do kind of a two-pronged thing, one, the ordinance, and the other, just information to, you know, Bellingham has become really big as urban gardeners, and a lot of fruit trees, a lot of other things, and just the caution for people in the neighborhoods, the need to, it's not necess, it's not, as apples fall, it's not feeding the deer, but they will come and lay. I've seen them at neighbors' places, just spending the whole day, just laying there, munching on apples, so, just cautionary thing of people to clean up around their trees and things, because otherwise you do have deer there, and then also affecting other plants that you, where you don't want them. So, just, I think the need to educate people to clean up relating to garden waste, tree, and fruit, things around the yards, but definitely in favor of an ordinance against the feeding, because it does bring them in and allows them to stay in that one area.
Dan?
And we have other, other examples from other communities in, in the packet here. I guess my question would be, how is this enforced, and who enforces such an ordinance? This is a code compliance officer that would do that, and what would, what would be the thing that she or he is not doing when they're enforcing this?
Well, I could briefly let you know what I've heard, and then I believe there's this representative from the Humane Society here to, to speak with on that as well, if, if you'd like to hear from her. But we did talk to the police department, and they feel that their code enforcement is so backed up on housing and rental-related things that, that they would have difficulty managing it, plus they don't have necessarily animal expertise, whereas the Humane Society does have expertise, but they have similar workload issues with regard to, they're already oversubscribed in terms of the demand, given their contract, and so, there, there is an issue of the intensity of enforcement, and I believe that something like this, it would probably generate a lot of complaints initially, and hopefully, they would die down to be somewhat minimal, but there's no predicting that. I, I did make some calls to other cities to indicate what, what level of activity they're seeing, and unfortunately, I didn't hear back from some, some of the people in other cities, but I did speak to an assistant, and she couldn't remember any instance where this came up in her town where they have one in place, but that doesn't necessarily indicate that that's what would happen in Bellingham. So, that, there is potentially an issue of not having a quick response.
April?
Well, I think there's a step that we need to go through before we go to ordinance development, and it's, what are our outcomes that we're looking for? You've already stated that by having this, it's not gonna decrease the population, we're gonna have situations where people are gonna have apple trees, they're not gonna clean up under them, are they technically feeding wildlife? I think what I'm hearing in the complaints that I've gotten in my inbox, and from various phone calls, is that they are, these, these particular people are dealing with some really aggressive animals, and they have some neighbors who really enjoy it, apparently, and don't find the animals very aggressive, so they're feeding them, and whenever they're calling, I don't know if it's Fish and Wildlife or whatever it is, they're saying, you don't have an ordinance on the books, and then therefore, we can't go talk to that neighbor. And all their, what I'm hearing them ask for is not necessarily too much more than just getting something on the books, and somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, so that then they could say, but there is an ordinance, and now that body can go have a conversation with the neighbor. I, I wanna make sure we're trying to figure out what outcome we wanna get to, because that will really tell us what kind of ordinance that we want. And I think, you know, with all of this, as many complaints as we got about feeding animals, I got just as many on the other side of it, you know, the woman who lives across from me that loves feeding the crows, which ultimately is the squirrels, and then, you know, people find a lot of joy in this, and so, I think for every person that's really angry about it, you're gonna have somebody that loves it, and I just wanna be really clear that if, if we're just trying to give somebody one more tool, whenever they have gotten to their wits' end about what's going on, then let's give them that tool, but let's be very clear about what we're doing. Otherwise, this can get really mushy, and I don't wanna go forward until I really know what is the outcome that we want.
Well, I'll take a turn. I would say that the, the problem here is people who feed the animals intentionally. There's no reason we should pass any rules against accidental or incidental feeding or unintended feeding, or, you know, forget it. This is entirely about people who are intentionally doing something which is destructive and harmful to the wildlife, and destructive and harmful to their neighborhood by increasing the population. I think that's not true. This doesn't make, this really will keep the population lower than it would be. There are enormous concentrations of these deer where they're being fed, and that's very unhealthy and very unnatural for the deer. I think the main point really is to get it on the books. With all of our activities, I think education comes first, warning and citations, you know, or compliance comes second, and citations are a last resort that may never be reached. But right now, we can't even get kind of to step one or step two unless it's clear, as you say, the State Department, wildlife officials are stymied, our, our local animal control people can't point to anything wrong on the books, and I think that if we have rules on the books, it enables both those sets of officials, in their current capacity, to, you know, point to for people who are intentionally feeding the animals, who are intentionally doing things which makes the matters worse. So, I think we can accomplish a lot by putting it on the books, and I don't imagine this being a large enforcement effort personally. I saw Terry, though, but is there anyone else over here? So, Terry, then April.
I think in terms of doing an ordinance and passing it, this is going to act like a number of other ordinances that we did pass. No, we're not going to have a big enforcement effort in hiring people to go out and be the deer police or anything, but a number of years ago, we passed an ordinance saying banning the use of phosphorus fertilizers in the watershed. We knew it wasn't going to ban all use of it, but we know most people, when they know it's against the law, are going to quit using it. We passed an ordinance here that, for no smoking on trails. Now, did we expect the police to go out and round up everybody who's smoking on trails? No, but it does allow Dan to come and tell me, hey, bud, put that cigarette out, it's against the law, or it will stop a lot of people from doing it because it is against the law. And that's, I think, what we're looking for, that's the effect we're having here. It says you're not allowed to do that here. If you do it, yeah, you're, you're in violation. A neighbor can say to someone, you know, you're violating this, this law. We're not gonna, we don't need to hire somebody, we're not going to solve all the problems with it, but I think in general, it's just not a good policy to be able to doing that. So, I'm in favor of moving forward and developing something, and then bring it back to the council for a fuller discussion.
April, then Roxanne.
I just would suggest that prior to development, you would have that conversation with Fish and Wildlife. That's my understanding, is that people want to have that little tool in their box so when they call them, and if that's all we're doing, then I think they could be really helpful in, in getting us exactly what we need, so these neighbors can have that one more step that they can take, if they're not able to have those conversations on their own. So, I do think that that needs to go in there, so we're making sure that we're legislating exactly what outcome we're trying to get to, and we can make it very clear to the constituents, we're not saying that a bird feeder, that a squirrel gets into, now you're gonna get in trouble for feeding the mammals. I think if we could just be very clear of what our intent is, build an ordinance around that, we'll just, I think we'll be ahead in the end. That's my, my concern.
Okay, Roxanne, and then Pinky.
My house is in Sunnyland, and my kitchen looks out on the backyard, which is right next to an alley in a very industrial area. I mean, the industrial businesses are a block away from our house. I couldn't believe it, one day when I was doing some dishes, I looked out my window and wondered if there was a bear in my backyard, and said it was a deer, and my next-door neighbor said they'd never seen a deer there in 30 years. So, this is definitely an issue for all the neighborhoods. One thing that I think, as we're going through this, is it's really good for us to define it as an issue in our community, and to try to help people understand how problematic it is, and all of the issues that it brings forward when people feed deer or feed other animals. So, maybe that's just a very good outcome, if we can get some community education on how to handle that.
Pinky?
I just wanted to say, I am definitely in support of doing this ordinance. I, I think we all love our environment, but we are definitely overrun with deer, and this might not solve anything, everything, but it might start to alleviate some of that pressure. And I think that most people follow the law once there is a law, so I think that's the majority. But I do think that it's an important aspect that we educate everyone in the city about the law moving forward, and we give them the opportunity to make the changes themselves.
Well, there appears to be support for moving forward, but the staff will need direction exactly, that goes to April's point, what sort of direction, and Kelly, well...
No, you go ahead.
I was just going to move that we direct staff to take what they've heard here and to develop an ordinance and bring it back for a fuller discussion and possible passing.
Second? Give a motion before us to develop an ordinance related to the intentional feeding of wild, wild animals in city limits, kind of based on the discussion here about trying to achieve particular outcomes and not other outcomes. Kelly?
Well, Dan and April kind of raised my issue, which is, I think the expectation about enforcement is, really needs to be clear, because normally I'd say, well, if you're not, if you're not gonna enforce an ordinance, why are we passing it? Now, I understand Terry's rationale for why we would do that. If it's just something so Fish and Wildlife or somebody can go talk to somebody who is abusing the, the feeding of the animals, then I understand that. I just, I, you know, we, we just had Don talk about how many, how we can't get to the work we're already doing, and so, if the council's clear, which it seems you are, that this is not gonna be at the top of the enforcement list for the police, but it will be a tool, then I think that that would be, would be better. And Mark, 63 years ago, there were deer all over my backyard, so, some of them are here before. But, yeah, we see a lot of deer in our neighborhood, too, and, and especially, I don't like to see the, the dead deer. So, it sounds like you all are pretty clear that this is not number-one enforcement.
Good, the motion before us, and as I said, Peter, you have been talking with Mark, and you can work together and create an outline or an actual ordinance. It sounds like we're not looking for a major enforcement issue, nothing criminal about it, really something just on the books that can serve as a basis for both education and possible enforcement if it goes that far, but we're not really looking for that. Did that summarize it well? All of those in favor of the motion of direction to staff, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you very much. We'll move on to the third item. This is introduction of a resolution affirming the Bellingham City Council's support for Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, the DACA program, a federal immigration program. Recently, United States President Donald Trump announced his plan to terminate the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals program. This action would affect an estimated 800,000 immigrant children across the country, approximately 17,000 in Washington State, and it would affect, you know, uncounted students locally. It is an action that is likely to lead to harmful trauma, hurt local and national economies, and create unrest here and throughout our country. We're actually already seeing the arguments going on at the state and national level, including lawsuits already being filed by state governments. The attached resolution is being, is asking the City, Bellingham City Council, to stand in solidarity and support of DACA. The council has several options, we could opt to discuss it today and/or edit the resolution, or we could consider sending the resolution to our City Council's Justice Committee at the next meeting. This item was brought forward by Councilmember Roxanne Murphy. Roxanne?
Well, like many members of our community, and I'm sure members of our council, when this news hit the airwaves, I was extremely concerned, very frustrated, and it's wonderful to be at a point in my life where I can actually try to do something positive and try to take a good stand, and so, I drafted this resolution really quickly. I really wanna thank the Yakima City Council, because they sent a letter to the I really want to thank the Yakima City Council, because they sent a letter to the president about this issue. So, a lot of the research that I did about it included content that I took from that letter to form our resolution. I also really wanted to get this resolution in the books in case any council members had anything that they wanted to discuss about their feelings about this, or if it's something that you want to go forward with. So, I'd appreciate anybody's support of it or any thoughts.
Pinky?
Well, I just want to say that I'm supportive of it moving forward. I'm okay with it not going to the Justice Committee. I'm okay with moving forward with it right away. That's just my personal stance.
Dan?
I am absolutely supportive of this measure. I want to thank Councilwoman Murphy for her leadership and her action on this. I don't understand what the function would be to send it back to the Justice Committee, so I'm just trying to get clear on that. Is there, what is the function of that?
I think it's just a process thing. Often, when things are introduced, we refer them to committee. You know, it just depends on how we want to do it. I'm supportive of just moving forward. Terry?
Yeah, I am supportive of it just moving forward. I think this is really timely, that it happens now, and that we do let people know that this is where we stand, this is what we believe, and we stand in opposition to the action that was taken out of the White House, putting people in jeopardy. You know, the Dreamers, right now, they came forward because they were asked to with information, and now they put themselves in jeopardy because of these actions. So, I think this is very appropriate that we take action. I don't think we need a whole lot of other discussion before our committee.
Well, I agree. You know, watching that announcement on television, it was about as horrible as it gets, but I do believe now it's in the hands of where it's supposed to be, and I think Congress will act. I'm hopeful that both sides are going to, from what I hear, both sides are coming together now and talking about doing this permanently. So, we need to do this, and I think as soon as we get this in there, the better.
Terry?
There's one addition, though, that I would like to add, because I think what the Yakima did was a great idea, that we pass it and we send it on to our representatives and to the White House regarding this, that this is action we take.
I would point out that one of the recitals in here refers to an action the city council took just barely six months ago in a resolution, where we said that we will not turn our backs on immigrants regardless of documentation status. I think it'd be kind of funny if we did not take notice of the fact that the federal government is, was poised to take a direct, you know, reversal, of course, on these Dreamers. So, we've already kind of spoken on this issue, and I think this is being consistent with ourselves in saying that. Mayor, you want to say something as well?
Yeah, I just wanted you all to know, I didn't ask your permission, but I already signed the governor's letter with other mayors across the nation about opposing this decision that the administration's made. So, I think it would be fine if you didn't go back to committee on this particular resolution, because I think it is consistent with the city's policy, not just what we think about this, but what we think about anything like racial profiling or discrimination or whatever. I mean, I think we're pretty clear, we don't accept any of that.
Dan?
I'm just going to move to approve the resolution affirming the Bellingham City Council's support for Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals immigration program.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the resolution affirming the support of DACA. I would just indicate that the resolution is really directed at the United States President and the U.S. Congress to continue the program and to work on it. We have no control over this program. We're asking the authorities, who do have control of the program, to continue it in some good form. Roxanne?
I just really want to thank the council for the support. I think it means a lot to our community. So, Hishka, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion before us to recommend to the city council, that is ourselves tonight, to pass this resolution. All those in favor of the recommendation for approval signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, I will bring that forward with a positive recommendation tonight. That was our third agenda item and our last one. We now move on to regular business. First is the approval of minutes. We have one set of meeting minutes from August 14th. Any corrections or changes to the meeting minutes from the committee meeting of August 14th? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Those minutes are passed.
One abstention.
One abstention.
Yeah.
Let the record indicate that Councilwoman Vargas abstained. She was absent, I believe, at that meeting.
She was getting her hair dyed pink.
Under old and new business, I'd first like to bring up something. I received a letter last week from the Watcom Transportation Authority. This has to do with the fact that every four years, under state law, the WGA is required to convene a, what are they calling it? A Board Composition Review Committee, to basically review the idea of how the board is composed. Each city can appoint a representative. The usual assumption is that we will just simply appoint our single-city council representative. However, Bellingham has two. We are under no obligation to appoint either myself or Roxanne, who are the current representatives. Whoever we do appoint, they would need to attend the meeting on Wednesday morning, 10:00 a.m., October 18th. I'd be happy to attend, but if there's any people who want to, we can talk about it. Can someone make a motion to?
Move to send Michael to the WTA Board.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion is to appoint Councilwoman Velikus to the WGA Board Composition Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That honor is mine. Other things in old and new. April?
So, I was able to attend the Arch for Healing and Reconciliation event. It was absolutely, I think serendipitous is maybe the word for the timing of it and the importance that it brought to our history and the history that we're going to be writing for ourselves. In that, I was really interested. We've talked a little bit on the Parks Commission, and I've also been working with the Library Board of Trustees, but there's a couple of things that could play into as that arch is installed. One is we've been asking for a very long time to have an ADA-accessible ramp, and I know when it came to Parks Commission, there was some ideas that it's possible that we could maybe time these to where the pathway would go under that arch and then come on down to the backside of the library. And then, in the Board of Trustees, there's, we've already had permission to remove the fountain, that has never worked for my children. It's been more of a nuisance to bring them down there than it actually has been fun. But, so we have permission to remove that. We've talked about it's in our comp plan to have a kind of vibrant space to gather downtown, and the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees has been interested in would we be able to do some type of park feature down there as well. So, my question is just to throw it out there to the mayor and then Leslie, that as we're looking at the Arch for Healing and Reconciliation, are we going to be able to maybe morph these, whether we stage it, but have a plan in place so that people know, especially for the walkway, if those could be timed together?
I think they already are. So, when there was talk about not having the arch there, but having it someplace else, overlooking the Maritime Heritage Park was one of the ideas. There, one of the points in favor of doing it at the library is because we could combine it with an ADA-accessible path. So, that's already in the works.
Okay, and then discussions about the removal of the fountain in a place space for children?
I haven't heard anything about that. So, nothing had come to me, it's coming from you now, but nothing had come from me, or at least I wasn't told about it yet, it was my first day back, about that. And so, the only, it's not a concern, the only issue that I see about that is, what are we going to do with that plaque? Because at one point in time, a family donated the money to recognize their loved one, and it would be good just to decide if we're taking that out, which I'm fine with, if there's something we'd like to do with that plaque.
Yeah, and there has been conversations with the family that they're okay with that being removed. So, I think that's been, it's just, what's that next step? So, I'll.
Well, the next step is just what you did. You cast it on to me. Thank you. Thank you.
I would just add that I think the Historic Preservation Commission has some kind of authority over that, because that is considered an art installation. I don't know what the process is, but that'll need to be included somehow.
Yeah.
Okay, I also saw Terry.
Yeah. Couple items. One was what April mentioned. I was also, I was at the Arch of Reconciliation and Healing, and I just want to thank the people in Bellingham, because it was a great turnout to come out on Labor Day for this. And I think the project is a great project, you know, commemorating the, that, the events, not denying, but acknowledging the events that took place, the kicking out of the Sikhs from Bellingham, the kicking out of the Chinese, the removal of the Japanese at different points, acknowledging and now saying, "We welcome immigrants in Bellingham." And that's what this is going to be about as well, welcoming on the base of it in all different parts of languages on the base of that. And I just wanted to commend the people of Bellingham for coming out and turning out. Again, this is what Bellingham has been about. The second item is, I want to pass these out. I think you might have received the resolution in the email, but I have a resolution that I want to bring up and, and not necessarily for passage right now, but at least by our next, you know, for our next meeting and things. But it is a resolution celebrating September 21st as the International Day of Peace and recognizing the 15th anniversary of the Peace and Justice Center. So, I wanted to introduce this now, the 21st of September has been the recognized Day of International Day of Peace. I believe we have a meeting coming up on the.
23rd.
Oh, it's the 23rd.
We have to do it now.
I would have liked to have gotten in the packet before, but I was gone, and so, this was the best way I could do that.
Why don't we just pass it now?
Well, that's what I'm going to ask. I, that's why I had Marie send it out ahead of time so people would be able to see it, is that a possible, if it's a possibility, but that's up to you.
Promotion, you recommend approvals?
Tried to do it in advance, and I did get it to people in advance, so it's up to the council.
Terry, you already got it.
Well, I'm getting dirty looks from April, so I just have to say.
This is, this is irregular. We really do prefer to have, you know, items introduced under old and new and then brought back in orderly fashion under committee. That's not a legal requirement. We have a motion on the table. April?
Well, I just, I don't appreciate the remark that you're getting dirty looks from me. I'm looking at you trying to understand the process, because you kept me very much to process, and to say that publicly, that's very disrespectful to another council member.
Okay, well, that's what it felt like, but.
Well, that's your feeling, but you stated it to the community that that happened, and it did not.
Okay, and then I apologize to the public and to you.
Thank you. Let's direct the comments to the motion. I like, I really say, this really is irregular. You know, unfortunately, timing on the previous matter, there's a resolution, timing on this one, doesn't allow us to follow what I think is our best orderly process. We saw commitment to good process on several other issues. I like us to observe that kind of orderly process, but neither should we handcuff ourselves unnecessarily. So, you know, this is a fine resolution. I don't, I don't see a problem with it. If it was controversial, I think I would pull the line.
You just said it. We've had some controversial ones over the years. This is not controversial. So, in that sense, I don't think we're doing anything bad.
So, we have a motion before us to go ahead and pass this resolution tonight. Kelly?
And it's fine, whatever you want to do. I don't think this is controversial either. We also have the opportunity to do a proclamation that I could do with the city council that wouldn't, that wouldn't necessitate passing something now if there is a concern about process. So, the proclamations, while they come from the mayor's office, they can, they can obviously be shared with, I mean, the council and the mayor can do it together. So, I'd just throw that out as an option if anybody thinks that that might be something you'd like to do.
Further discussion? Okay, so, as I understand the motion, the motion is to recommend approval of this resolution to the, to the council this evening. Peter, no problems with this?
No, you just want to read it into the record tonight.
Okay, Terry will have the honor of reading the entire resolution into the record. Yes, that's a good short one.
Can I have a copy, please?
Okay. Here. I'm going to go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor of recommending approval of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll bring that forward tonight. Terry, you're finished on old and new?
I'm finished.
Pinky?
Yeah, I just wanted to address something that happened at the last council meeting that I wasn't asked, I wasn't attending. We were asked whether or not we could have a representative on the jail financial. I can't remember the wording of the, but for continuity's sake, I would like to be our representative. I know on camera, you guys thought that maybe Roxanne and I were going to wrestle it out, but I'm just going to ask for continuity if I could, if I could be on, serve on that committee. Thank you.
Please remind, this is a request that came from.
From Sheriff Elfo.
From Sheriff Elfo.
This is for, if it passes. So, this is if the jail measure passes, then that's going to be this community, committee.
And to oversight what we're spending, how we're spending, so that there's an oversight committee for the jail, if I'm understanding my.
The oversight committee, is that created by the inter-local? So, if, if, if the mayor, if the ballot measure passes, then the J of F U A takes effect, and if it takes effect, there is a financial oversight board.
Added the oversight into that.
We added the oversight board.
We asked for it.
And we have, we have, we have a nomination to fill that position, which would be Councilwoman Vargas?
I think I'm, I'm, the mayor, whoever the mayor is, is on, and then one council member.
Okay, is there a second for the nomination, or?
There is.
Okay, that is, that is a second for the nomination, not a second nomination? Okay. Any further discussion to, I will call this a pre-appointment. I said designate that you would be the appointee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
So, I will get back to Sheriff Elfo with Pinky's name.
Okay, any other items under old and new business? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. We will now go on to take our recess for executive session. Executive sessions are closed to the public, and there will be a report at the regular meeting tonight of the two items. The two items are potential property acquisition, approximately 10 minutes, and the second item is a litigation matter, Swaddish versus the city of Bellingham, also estimated 20 minutes. I'll be back here in five minutes after four o'clock approximately to.